Okay, Happy New Year Canyon City. This is an exciting city council meeting as we introduce 2022. We have some new council members onboard and some reelections as well. And we're really excited and happy to be able to do that. Cindy, did you have a hard copy of the updated agenda by any chance?
Yeah, it should be under me. Yes, citizens request to speak.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and start with our roll call, please.
Councilmember Dennehy.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Hockes. Absent. Councilmember Reed. Absent. Councilmember Schmisher.
Here.
Councilmember B Smith.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack.
Here.
Mayor Smith.
Here. Let's all rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And we will now ask for the approval of minutes for a regular city council meeting December 6th and December 8th.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to motion that we approve the minutes for the regular city council meeting on December 6th and the general government meeting on December 8th.
Second.
Please put in motion and a second. Any discussion? Call vote, please.
Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher.
Aye.
Councilmember B Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack.
Aye.
All right, that has passed. It's now time to swear in the newly elected officials. I'm going to call forward John Hammack, city council member. Do you do one at a time Cindy or? Okay. Andrea Stein, city council member. Emily Tracy, city council member. And then myself, Ashley Smith, for mayor.
Do you want me to move?
Oh.
Fuck you, don't do that.
Rabid ears, come on.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, John Dennehy.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and the laws.
The Constitution and the laws.
Of the state of Colorado.
Of the state of Colorado.
And the charter.
And the charter.
Ordinances.
Ordinances.
Laws and regulations.
Laws and regulations.
Of the city of Canyon City.
Of the city of Canyon City.
And will faithfully perform.
And will faithfully perform.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. If you can, please sign your oaths up front for me, please.
Before we have a change in seating, we would like to take a moment to recognize councilmembers Dolly Gonzalez and Frank Hockes and for their dedicated service to Canyon City. Um, Dolly, particularly with you here, want to say thank you for your service. It's been a pleasure being with you for these past four years. Your obvious dedication to representing your constituents and making huge strides in making Canyon City better for business. And your heart and your passion, your connection to the community. So, thank you so much. And it's been a pleasure and I've learned a lot from you.
Thank you, wow, thank you.
Thank you, Dolly.
I just wanted to say just a little something. These past four years have been some of the most difficult work that I've ever done. From making staff changes at City Hall to dealing with the grief of losing a dear friend, mentor, in Jim Meisner. Big decisions are not easy decisions. Luckily, I didn't have to make them alone. I always had a team of smart, prepared, like-minded individuals behind me, helping me talk through these big decisions. And a lot of what comes behind those decisions are trust. And I trust all of you. I trusted you to help me make good decisions and I trust you in the future to make good decisions. I also had tremendous support of community members who helped keep my mind clear from all the noise. I will be forever grateful for this experience, the people I've met and the friends that I've made. I will continue to be involved. So, sorry, you guys are still going to see me. And who knows? I may, you may see my name on a ballot again someday. Thank you, everyone.
Um, Dolly, we now have a plaque for you that we'd like to present from Ryan Stevens.
Down front.
Should we have the city councils? Let's all stand up behind Stolly. Is that okay? We also have a tribute for Frank Hockes, but we'll give that to him at another time. And also just want to publicly thank him for his many, many years of service to Canyon City as well and his dedication to his constituents. And at this time, with great solemnity, we're going to have the changing of the seats for Dolly Gonzalez to step down and for Emily Tracy and Andrea Stein to take their seats. And if that's okay, we'll take another picture with the new council. I think we can all just stand up again. So, come on for the picture, if you don't mind.
Scooch, scooch in, come on in.
Just scooch in, it doesn't matter what order. Thank you. All right, so a final applause for council, former councilwoman Dolly Gonzalez and our new council members on this. It's now time that I would like to request a nomination for Mayor Pro Tim.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to nominate John Hammack as Mayor Pro Tim.
Second.
Thank you for that nomination and the second. Is there any discussion? I would like to say that has been a huge boost for me to have John Hammack as a Mayor Pro Tim these past two years. He's been a great support in many, many ways. And thank you for your service. But we will now call for a vote on that.
Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed. Oh, absent, sorry. Councilmember Schmisher.
Aye.
Councilmember B Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Stein.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracy.
Aye.
And Mayor Pro Tim Hammack.
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim.
Thank you, council.
I don't believe we have any requests to speak to council today. Oh, we do have one. Oh, here we go. Brian Cooper. This is time for you to come speak to council.
I had to bring a large typed paper just because I'm getting older. But, Honorable Mayor, fellow council members, thirty-five years ago, when my wife and I purchased our house here in Canyon City, we were not informed that all of the private property within the city limits were going to become a state wildlife preserve and that all of our private property rights were going to end and go away. Up until a few years ago, we could plant flowers and other plants in our yard and enjoy them all summer long. Our gardens was ours. We could harvest our vegetables and enjoy the fruits of our labor. But not anymore. I am asking this council to finally give us back our private property rights. The deer herds within the metro area have gotten totally out of hand and by this summer, it'll be sixty percent at least worse. We now have to give our pets Lepo vaccine to protect them from diseases transmitted by the deer. We have to protect them from Rocky Mountain tick and the fever transmitted by them. And I'm certain in the very near future, we will be seeing tick fever in some of our youth that play sports in the fields around town. Hunting is no longer a viable alternative because of the huge number of deers that need to be harvested. The city and county should pressure the Division of Wildlife to trap and remove the deer. Either remove them back into public lands where they belong or process them into food to feed the hungry in this area. Many cities and other states have similar problems and they feed a large percentage of their needy with such programs. The city also needs to take a very serious look at the antiquated fencing regulations here in the city. In the county, property owners can fence out the deer. That thus moves more deer into the city properties. The property owners in the city do not have that method to protect their property. Canyon City encompasses property that is made up of city property, county property, and other public properties such as Griffin Park area. There's also some city property that is surrounded by county property and vice versa. This council should take the lead in this problem because people think of Canyon City not just as the deeded property within the city limits, but as the metro area that it has become. I have to go out in my yard with a five-gallon bucket and a shovel every other day and remove deer shit. This, I've killed three ticks on my porch and sidewalks here before the snow. Is this becoming really a problem that needs to be dealt with? And you're the only arm around that could really put some pressure on the Division of Wildlife to try to do something about this matter. It wasn't like this even twenty-five years ago. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. We actually had some very extensive conversations with the Department of Wildlife probably three years ago and with the public. And we asked, we considered a number of viable ways to help control the deer herds within city limits and even considering birth control for the does. Relocating them, they said, does not work because they perish and die and it's inhumane. And that, well, and it's also really expensive. And that we can't harvest them and sell the meat or even donate it to like food pantries. It's against the law. But what was the solution is expanding the opportunity for bow hunting within city limits. And we actually passed an ordinance to allow increased number of permits for bow hunting on properties of about an acre or more. And they regulate, they've been, they said it'll take a few years to regulate the deer population, but they base the increased number of tags based on getting that number of deer population more under control. It'll never totally go away, but it is something that we have been very, very mindful of. And it was an initiation really from the public demanding that because like you said, for car accidents and such is definitely, and just the annihilation of in-town crops as well is a big consideration. Yeah, I'll ask about that. Do you have something to say about the fencing, especially for gardens?
Not necessarily about the fencing regulations, but we do have Department of Wildlife scheduled for February 9th to give us an update on the bow hunting season and progress report and how that's going.
That'll be good to hear from that. So, did you hear that? February 9th would be an excellent time to attend city council and address the Department of Wildlife yourself and hear that conversation.
And that's a five o'clock meeting, sir. The general government, yes, sir.
And Councilmember Dennehy would like to say something.
And unfortunately, I didn't get to see, which part of town do you live in? Roughly, I mean, Lincoln Park. Okay, well, I live in Lincoln Park too. So, I'm very aware of the situation up there. And if my wife gardens, believe me, I watched her and the Division of Wildlife go out in my field and I had to walk away because I was laughing so hard listening to her. So, but it is a problem up there. And unfortunately, we're seeing a dramatic increase up there. And so, I do think that it's important that, you know, on February 9th, please come. And, you know, I've talked with Zach Holder on this issue as well. As you know, there is the tags within the city limits and I have yet to see anybody near me hunting them yet. And that's one problem. And I've even said, hey, I have three acres. Anybody's welcome to come on my property and, you know, and, but please come on February 9th because I think it's important, the more voices we get out on this because you're right, there is an issue here. We're never going to eradicate them. We have mountains all around us. But we can do something and, you know, and come in and let your voice be heard then.
Um, Mayor Pro Tim Hammack.
And I just wanted to add, in addition to everything that's been said so far, is I believe the DOW does take statistics where they're doing censuses on deer population. And so, we should, there should be some hard facts and figures that we can go off of. We are, we will be taking a look back when they're here to see how effective the hunting program that we established has been. And so, we look forward to hearing from them. And the, unfortunately, it's not up to council to set the number of tags that are issued each year. But we do, the DOW has been very cooperative with us and listened to our concerns and has come up with what we thought was a solution three years ago. But it's time to revisit that and see where we are and see if there's further actions that need to be taken.
Councilmember Smith.
I think they covered it. I was just more concerned about the area of town that we were talking about. So, thank you.
That's why I mentioned Canyon City metro area. You know, I got, I'm in a corner. Two corners of my intersection are in the city, two corners in the county. Then you go city, county, city, county, down the block. Two different directions. And I'm not saying anything about the annexation laws or anything else, but it does require a lead by some group. And I figure city council really is the one that I'm approaching. I'm going to approach the county also, but the county encompasses a lot more area. And I'm not worried about the deer in Williamsburg or wherever, but it is a severe problem. And I do know for a fact that other cities allow wild game to be processed and given to the needy. So, however that needs to be done, I think would be a fantastic thing. And transporting them out into the wild, I don't see anything wrong with that. That goes back to natural habitat. And the city is not a natural habitat. I see too many deer with broken legs, hopping on three legs. I've seen them caught in fences. I mean, it's getting to be, how do you want to say, almost like cats and dogs, but it's really bad. And that's why I brought this up.
Well, thank you. Thank you for making sure we keep this on our radar and.
I'll be back.
For the discussion. Yeah, we'll see you in February for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Very kindly. Ryan, I'd like to invite you to go over our very extensive consent agenda.
Did you want to see if there were any council member announcements before that?
Are there any council member announcements?
We, Madam Mayor, we do have a meeting tomorrow night in addition. That's a general government meeting and we followed by a urban renewal authority, both here in this chamber, the first at five and the second at six.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. Councilwoman Tracy.
You got that out well. I just wanted to mention too, that the city's Energy Advisory Committee meets next Monday at ten AM here at City Hall. They're public meetings, so we really encourage folks who are interested in what the city is looking at in possible alternatives regarding electric power. I believe we have a presentation from Black Hills Energy at the meeting next Monday, if I'm correct on that. So, just wanted to mention that.
Um, well, that, those announcements remind me too that there's been questions that there's going to be a state of the city or the state of the city meeting. And we're actually going to piggyback that with Vision Committee. So, that'll be January nineteenth, Wednesday at five o'clock here at City Hall. Any other announcements? All right, it's back to you, Ryan, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of council, item 10A, by acclamation, the mayor appoints the list of people in the agenda to the listed committees. It's a rather extensive list. I'm not going to read that verbatim. 10B authorizes the mayor to appoint Lester Lamone and Rich Millard to two-year terms on the Historic Preservation Commission. 10C authorizes the mayor to reappoint Ryan Stevens as the city administrator, Hoffman, Parker, Wilson, Carberry, PC, as the city attorneys, and Larry Allen as the city of Canyon City municipal judge. 10D authorizes the city administrator to sign a stormwater facility maintenance extension agreement for bid eighteen twenty. 10E ratifies a bid for abatement at ten forty North Orchard with Bonnie's car crushers in an amount not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars. 10F awards bid extension for ten twenty-one septic tank and vault toilet pumping services, eleven twenty-one landfill disposal site, twelve twenty-one solid waste removal services, and twelve twenty supplemental tree and stump removal. 10G awards bid one twenty-two ready-mix concrete and flowable fill to Fremont paving ready-mix in an amount not to exceed eighty-two thousand dollars. 10H awards bid two twenty-two hot mix asphalt to Fremont paving and ready-mix and a split award to Martin Marietta in an amount not to exceed seventy thousand dollars. 10I awards bid three twenty-two aggregates to T-Zac Heavy Equipment, Inc. in an amount not to exceed ninety thousand dollars. 10J awards bid four twenty-two traffic control signs to roadside supplies in Pueblo in an amount not to exceed forty thousand dollars. 10K awards bid nine twenty-two patrol vehicles to Daniel's Long Chevrolet under state bid contract number one six five zero four seven in an amount not to exceed two hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars, two hundred and seven, two hundred and thirty-two thousand, two hundred and seven fifty dollars and fifty-six cents. 10L awards bid thirteen twenty-two liquid chlorine to DPC Industries in an amount not to exceed forty-five thousand dollars. 10M awards bid fourteen twenty-two aluminum sulfates to Chemtrade Chemicals US LLC in an amount not to exceed eighty-eight thousand five hundred dollars. 10N awards bid sixteen twenty-two water stock parts to Corin Maine in an amount not to exceed three hundred thousand dollars. 10O ratifies and files list of bills and P-card list of bills for the period ten, twelve seven through twelve thirty for the list of bills and P-cards from ten twenty to eleven seventeen. And then 10P receives and files a list of bills for twelve thirty-one through one four.
Thank you, Ryan. I will take questions from the council. We'll start with Councilmember Tracy.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Just had brief question. Sorry, thanks. I'll get used to this. I have brief questions about 10E, 10L, and 10O, if I may. I wondered on 10E, and that's in regard to the abatement at five forty North Orchard, if you could just say a little more. Perhaps city administrator Stevens could say a little bit more about the status of that property and why the city's needing to do that.
It's under court order for abatements and the abatement was done in December. That's why it's coming for, to be ratified by city council. It happened between city council meetings.
Thanks. And then my question on 10L, we're seeing a really large increase in the price of liquid chlorine and just wondered if we know what that's about, if there's any contributing factors on that.
Yeah, we're seeing COVID shortages and price increases and we have the water superintendent Travis Payne here. I don't know Travis, if there's anything else you'd like to say regards to that?
That was a really large increase. We were hoping for more like forty to fifty percent increase. With the liquid chlorine, a lot of their raw water facilities are down in the Gulf of Mexico. So, they were hammered by some weather events earlier this year. And apparently, those factories take a long time to get back up to speed. So, some of it is sourcing of that chlorine. So, some of it's sourcing the chlorine and some of it's raw material acquisition and some of it's transportation. So, kind of all of that together was a really, really big increase. Additionally, on that, I want to make sure you guys know too that those prices were only held till the end of March. So, there could be additional price increases coming this year with liquid chlorine. Unfortunately, with liquid chlorine, DPC is kind of the only manufacturer of that. So, they kind of have a monopoly on the, on the liquid chlorine as well.
Thanks. My question, if I may, in regard to 10O is on page four of the P-card disbursements. I think toward the bottom, I don't have it open in front of me at the moment. But there was a charge for almost twelve thousand dollars from the general fund for COVID rapid tests. And I just wondered if, if there's some other availability for the city or not to take advantage of the state program on those? If you can just maybe fill us in a little bit on what that's for.
Sure. So, the city received CARES funds and we had to spend those funds by the end of December. So, that was the balance of our CARES funds we used to purchase rapid tests. And I'm glad that we did. We're seeing a lot of, you know, positive cases right now and being able to test staff quickly through the rapid test certainly helps. But those were CARES funds. It was not necessarily direct general funds that were used for that. They were federal CARES fund dollars.
So, is there not availability for the city to take advantage of the free tests that the State Department of Public Health and Environment makes available?
We do have some of those tests as well. You know, the police department has, is utilizing the state tests. But there are also reporting requirements that come with the state tests and there's less paperwork with the, just having our own rapid tests.
Well, and Administrator Ryan Stevens, also, the. Well, Administrator Ryan Stevens, also, part of the incentive of buying that amount of rapid tests is with the impending or possible requirements from Capitol Hill that would require vaccinations or frequent rapid testing that we wanted to be in stock and prepared to have those tests ready and to go for our employees in case that happened.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem Hamrick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to relate a, although it's not data because it's just a personal observation. But I was in a local hardware store here the other day, and a gentleman came in and bought all of the 20-foot-long, 4-inch PVC pipes that the hardware store had. He looked a little bit cheapish, and he looked over to me kind of in way of explanation. And he said, "The reason I'm buying these is because I was just down at a national chain hardware store that I won't name here in Canyon City." And he said, "The price on those, the same item down there was over $60 each." The price he was paying at our local hardware store was $23 and change. And so oil, energy, things that require oil, things that require energy are going to go through the roof.
Councilmember Schmisher.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I actually had a follow-on question on 10L. With regard to the pricing only being held through March 31st, as Superintendent Payne mentioned, what's the longer-term plan? Will this be rebid in March? Or are we locked into this for a year? What does that look like?
So with it only being held through March, I've been reaching out via email to see if they have any information on what's going to happen in March and why they only guaranteed it through March. And I haven't received anything back. So with any hope it won't increase at all or be a very minimal increase that we could absorb. But I would assume if it's over a certain percent that we'd probably rebid it.
Yeah, we would have to rebid. And then, you know, of course, as it gets to March, we would want to place an order and top off under our current rates.
Great, thank you so much.
Any more questions or discussion from council? I'd like to request or ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Madam Mayor, I would like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call vote please. Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher.
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Stein.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracy.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Hamrick.
Aye.
Thank you, council. Thank you, Ryan. Ryan, would you like to make any report to the council?
Sure. Yeah, you have a pretty lengthy administrator report in here that has the written comments. A couple of things that are not in the administrator reports, you know, newer developments. You know, Economic Development Manager Rick Harmon and I met with CDPE and the EPA today regarding the new method laundry project and that, the acquisition of that parking lot. We've got a plan. There's some additional testing in wells that need to be drilled. So, you know, we're expecting, you know, probably another two to three months of due diligence period based off of the feedback that we've received from both of those agencies. The other one is Rhodes Avenue. We did bid that out. We have received a bid response, and we are currently working through that bid response. And hopefully we'll be able to bring that forward to council for award at an upcoming council meeting.
That's our big project for the year, right?
That is. That's the stormwater project on Rhodes Avenue. And that is a very large project. And I'm happy to take any questions regarding the rest of the report.
Any further questions for Ryan Stevens? Okay, then I am going to open the public hearing. This is for item 12A, a new liquor license for Natural Grocers, fermented malt beverage off premises located at 121 North 16th Street. Cindy.
All the paperwork has been turned into the state, and they have approved it on their part. Natural Grocers did everything that we required of them, and they have gotten all the paperwork in.
All right, thank you very much. I would like to ask the applicant if they would like to speak. I believe they are on Zoom. I'm assuming it's Bob Dill. If we could get them unmuted.
And this is the attorney. Good evening. For the record, my name is Bob Dill. I'm an attorney representing Natural Grocers. And I believe Mr. Arnold Decesaro, who is a management representative, is also appearing this evening with me. Arnold, are you there?
Yes, sir.
Good, okay. If I may, we could proceed to have Arnold testify about the application at 121 16th Street and explain what's proposed there and the need for a beer license that has been applied for. Would that be permissible?
Yeah, absolutely, Mr. Arnold. Let's hear about what's going on with Natural Grocers and your beer liquor license.
So Arnold, for the record, would you state your name?
Arnold Decesaro.
And spell your last name for the record. Arnold, are you currently the manager of the store in Pueblo, Colorado?
Yes, sir.
How long have you been at that store?
One year.
And before that, were you employed by Natural Grocers?
No, sir. I was a store manager for King Supers, and I worked there for 40 years.
All right. With regard to the Pueblo store, does that store have a beer license?
Yes, sir.
And have you had any issues with regard to complying with state or local laws pertaining to the sale of beer and checking for age identification?
No, sir.
Regarding the store in Canyon, Cindy, when do you expect the store to open or plan to have the store open?
Projected date is in April.
Okay. Roughly, or could you generally tell the council about Natural Grocers? What's the concept for doing business of the company?
We're just a small, natural, and organic company that just wants to give customers healthy choices for food and drinks.
And can you tell us approximately how, how many square feet this store would be once it's ready for operation?
You know, from what I can tell, and I don't know the exact square footage, but it'd probably be about 10,000 square feet.
Okay. And about how many employees would you have or anticipate?
That store will probably have about 20 to 25 employees.
And what about the hours of operation? What do you typically have for those?
We open at 8:30 in the morning, and we close at 9:00 at night.
Does the company currently have about 34 or 35 beer licenses in the state of Colorado?
Yes, sir.
Are you aware of any violation of the local or state liquor laws that has been given to Natural Grocers regarding the various licenses throughout the state?
No, sir.
Regarding the process for checking customers for age identification, how is that handled at the check stand?
We require that they have a photo ID that shows their name, date of birth, and an expiration date. The acceptable forms of ID can be a state-issued ID, a driver's license. It can also be a military ID, because there is a lot of military in Southern Colorado, and also a passport or a passport card. All of these cannot be, they all have to be in date. They cannot be expired or altered.
And is each and every customer who wants to buy beer checked regardless of how they look?
Natural Grocers policy? Yes, Natural Grocers policy is we ID everyone that is wanting to purchase the beverage, fermented beverages.
And does the company have a, what I would call some sort of scanning device that would prompt the checker to ask for the ID if beer is attempted to be purchased or going to be purchased?
Yes, when it is scanned at the register, it will prompt you that you have to check the ID, and it won't let you proceed.
And what's the company policy if an employee were not to follow the requirements for checking for age identification and sells beer without following the law? What happens to the employee?
Well, first of all, they would, if they get caught, they will be terminated. If it is like a law enforcement, you know, sting, then the employee knows that they are liable for any fines and any kind of court costs that can occur from that.
What sort of beers would you propose to sell at this store if a license were to be approved?
We only carry local fermented beers and we, to support like Colorado beers. So it's a very small section. It'll probably be about 24 feet. So it doesn't, it's not a huge section. And like I said, it's just for local and Colorado fermented beers.
And are all the beers refrigerated that are to be sold?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Why do you think that Natural Grocers needs a beer license in this location? Do the customers expect it?
Oh, yeah. They come in because we only carry organic or natural, non-GMO products. So the products that we're going to be carrying are a healthier choice of fermented beers than the typical, you know, Budweiser or, you know, the larger beer companies.
Okay. And so would all the beer be kept or sold from a cooler?
Yes.
You don't sell any beer off the floor, so to speak? In other words, warm beer?
No, it's all in, it's all in a cooler.
Tell us about your experience in Pueblo. What's the community reaction in Pueblo to beer sales and the availability of beer?
Yeah, they were very excited that we're selling beer here in Pueblo. So, you know, we are a small grocery establishment, but to have, you know, 100% of what a grocery, a regular box store carries, the beer is included. And they're, they like that, being able to one-stop shop, so.
Do you believe Natural Grocers needs a license to enable it to compete in this particular environment? In other words, other supermarkets most likely have beer, 7-Eleven, convenience stores, what have you, for the most part, have beer. Is that correct?
Yeah. Yeah, but we're going to, we're going to have beers that you can't get in a convenience store because they're natural beers, non-GMO beers, organic beers. So it's going to be a little bit different product that the customers that shop here at our store don't go and get at a conventional box store or a large grocery store.
Now, Arnold, is it true that you're going to stay in Pueblo as the manager in the foreseeable future?
At this time, yes.
And was there a manager assigned to this store who fairly recently left the company?
Yes, it was, it was a real quick turnaround. They were unaware that it was going to happen.
And are you authorized then to speak on behalf of the company as it relates to this matter?
Yes, sir.
Is there anything else you would like to tell the council about this application that I have not asked you?
No, sir. I spend a lot of time in Canyon City, and my wife worked at City Market there in Canyon City. I think Canyon City is a great little town. So Natural Grocers will be a very good part of their community.
Very good. Thank you, Arnold. I don't have any additional questions for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, both Attorney Bob Dill and Mr. Arnold. We appreciate your presence here tonight for the public hearing. I do have a one question, not pertaining to the liquor license, but to the management of the Natural Grocers here in Canyon City. Are you anticipating the hiring of a new manager soon?
You know, so this was directed to me about a week ago. They were unaware that the manager was going to quit. He sent an email to them and said, "I quit." At this time, they could ask me to run both stores. I'm not sure if they're, you know, what their plan is. But they did ask me if I would represent them in this Zoom meeting with you. And like I said, our intent for Canyon City is to be a local partner and to make sure that we do the right things with selling alcohol.
All right, we do have some questions from the council. We'll start with council member Tracy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a question about a particular question on the written application form. On page three of the form, question number 11 asks, "Is the proposed retail fermented malt beverage off premises license or on-off premises license within 500 feet of a retail liquor store licensed under Section 443408 of Colorado Revised Statutes?" And I believe, I wasn't on council then, but I believe there's, just within a few months ago, that there was a retail liquor license granted. I don't know where you would, it's another North 15th or 16th Street address over near where the 16th Street Cafe is and some of those businesses along there. I don't know if that business establishment is within 500 feet or not. It's possible that the front door of that establishment is within 500 feet of the front door of Natural Grocers. And so I guess my question really is for city attorney Corey Hoffman. I know that that's in the law as a question to be asked of an applicant, but what is the legal implication? If it turns out that this is within 500 feet of Canyon Wine and Spirits, is there any legal implication of that?
I don't have the statute in front of me, and this is the type of question I wish we would have had asked earlier so we could be prepared to research it. But I don't know if, I can certainly do some quick research.
Okay. I wondered if the applicant's attorney might know.
Yeah, Mr. Dill may be able to respond.
Well, I'm a bit cut off guard. I was not aware of Canyon Wine and Spirits. I think when the application was filed, there was no, I could be mistaken, but there was no license granted to the liquor store. But to me, it's really a question of fact. If indeed we're within 500 feet as it's measured under the liquor code, then we have a real problem. And of course, the city could not issue a license under those circumstances. But I think it really depends on what exactly a measurement would disclose.
Cindy, you had something you wanted to say?
I say those, the one license came in, and the other one was not approved yet. So when they filled the application out, you are correct, there was not one at that time.
Okay, then I think we're okay.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Well, the only thing I was gonna say is just looking at the distance, and I think you gotta look at where you're going from, from Natural Grocers to the new liquor store over in Canyon Liquor, because just as an eye look at it, it's 500 feet from door to door. No issue at all there. But I don't know if you go off the corner of their property to...
It's the route of pedestrian. So you, for example, if there's a fence, you have to go around the fence. You can't go through the fence. So we'd have to act, I mean, it takes some actual, the way distance is computed, it is not as the crow flies.
Okay, so it, and I would say in that case, then absolutely, it's 500 feet, not an issue. I mean, just know, I know that parking lot well, and I understand distances. And if you had to go to, you know, a crosswalk or anything there, it's 500 feet.
In excess of 500 feet?
Yes.
Okay, well, that's helpful. That is, okay.
528 feet.
Yeah.
Do you have any advisement for us, Corey Hoffman?
I think based on both the Google Maps, the fact this was, at the time the application was filled out, the license did not exist. So this was truthful as of that date. And based on the evidence that's presented, I think they're qualified. They can meet the distance requirements.
What is the implication for that second license that could potentially be coming through?
No.
They'll both be okay.
Because the other one has now been in play already. It just happened after they are determining their application.
Okay. All right. Are there any other additional questions for Natural Grocers? I know that our community is incredibly excited to have a Natural Grocers come into town. I mean, it's gone viral to be able to have the opportunity for natural foods distribution in Canyon City available for our community, and we're really grateful for it. Yes, Corey Hoffman?
Mayor, I think they may have more evidence to present, because based on what's in your packet, there is some more, there is a petition that I think they need to present. So I don't think they're done with their presentation.
Oh, okay, got it. Well, we still are incredibly grateful. I know when we seek for input from new community members or what it takes for them to be happy to live in Canyon City, almost all the time, they say they want a natural foods here, and so we're glad to have you here. But I will let you continue with your presentation, please.
Thank you very much. It's my understanding that a company called Liquor Pros, based in Manitou Springs, did a petition survey in the defined area, which was the entire city limits of Canyon City. And hopefully, you have a copy of that in your packet. But to summarize it, my understanding is 98 persons indicated they were in favor of the license, and that's about 95% of those persons qualified to participate were in favor. I don't know if a representative from Liquor Pros, Sylvie Semino, is on the call here or the Zoom communication, but I'm quite sure that your files would contain this petition survey result.
Yes, it does.
So I would ask that that be considered as evidence marked as an exhibit and entered into evidence in this matter?
Yes, so we do have it as public record.
Thank you. Beyond that, the applicant has no additional evidence to offer in support of this request for a beer license.
Just a curious question. There are some other facilities that do sell alcohol in the Plaza area. Did you happen to reach out to any of those establishments and ask them their opinion about this additional license in the Plaza?
And you're asking me as the representative of the applicant?
Anyone that was involved in this application or petition.
Oh, Madam Mayor, I did, I did review the petitions, and I did note that the other businesses in the Plaza all signed as supporting.
Okay.
Is that, that's not quite correct?
Sorry, Mayor Protim. I think that there was one who cited an issue with competition, and that was Canyon Wine and Liquor on page...
Yes, I see that. It was signed December 13, and the reason for opposing it was competition.
I am not a customer of these products. Does the company that has a concern with competition, do they sell the same type of products as Natural Grocers would?
Mayor Smith, I believe that they are the ones that, where the liquor license was just approved, so I'm not sure if they're open yet or not, or what their intention.
They are open. They are just open.
I know it doesn't really, there's not a reason to deny or approve a license, but just curious, yeah.
And as you just stated, they do probably sell some products that are similar, but they go well beyond as their full liquor store. And so, you know, in my opinion, you know, I don't see an issue as far as competition with that at all.
Are there any other questions that the council would like to ask or statements that you would like to make?
I just have a comment. Based on what I heard from Mr. Arnold, it sounds to me like there's a specific type of alcohol that they're selling that is something beyond what other places are carrying in town. And if they would like, if these other places would like to carry those and create competition, that's their choice.
Is there anyone in the public or the audience that would like to address the council? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion. Councilmember Smith?
Madam Mayor and counsel, I move to approve the new liquor license for Natural Grocers fermented malt and beverages off premises located at 121 North 16th Street.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? I'll call a vote, please. Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Stein?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracy?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Hammack?
Aye.
The motion passes. Congratulations to Natural Grocers and to Mr. Dill and Mr. Arnold. Thank you so much for your thorough presentation. We certainly appreciate that and the homework that was done.
Thank you very much. My pleasure.
Thank you very much.
We're gonna move on to item number 13, and this is a discussion for the introduction and adoption by title only of Resolution 1, Series of 2022, entitled a resolution designating the public place for posting notice pursuant to CRS 24 dash six, six, dash 402, 2C. I am going to turn this over to our attorney.
Certainly, in every municipality in the state of Colorado, every local government in the state of Colorado at the first meeting of the year has to identify their posting place, and that's what this resolution does.
Gotcha. Are there any changes?
No.
Councilmember Tracy, do you have a question or a comment you'd like to make?
I'm ready to make a motion if you're ready for that.
Looks like we have a question over here by Councilmember Schmisher first, if that's okay.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. I think it's very important and prudent that the primary posting place be online, but I am wondering if it's possible for us to make the commitment to people that we would still post these in City Hall. I noticed that the way that it's worded right now, it's the city may additionally post notices at City Hall, but given that not everybody has access to the internet, I do think that it's important that they continue to be posted in hard copy here as well. And I'm wondering if there's any reason either from the attorney's perspective or from the city clerk's perspective as to why it would say "may additionally" instead of "will, will post notices at City Hall." Thanks.
And the answer is it's straight from the statute, but the city can certainly... And you can, if it is council's prerogative, do more notice than the statute requires. So you could change the word "may" to "shall," and that is certainly permissive under state law.
I would certainly prefer that from my perspective, and would like to make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 1, Series of 2022, with the amendment that the city shall additionally post notices at City Hall located at 128 Main Street.
I would second the motion.
There has been a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call a vote? Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Stein?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracy?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Hammack?
Aye.
Excellent. Thank you so much, City Council, and to our attorney and staff for all of your work that has gone into today's agenda. Our final item will be moving into the executive session. This is item 14A, and I will refer to Mayor Protim Hammack to get us into that session.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that City Council enter into executive sessions for the following purposes. An executive session to hold a conference with the city's attorney to receive legal advice on specific legal questions pursuant to CRS 24 dash six, dash 402, 4B concerning the development of city property.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call a vote? Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Stein?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracy?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Hammack?
Aye.
We will now move into executive session, which means inviting those in the audience to please leave so we can have consultation from our attorney. We will be meeting in the room next door.
We will be meeting. We're gonna relocate.
Yeah, we are relocating.